I'd like to call to order the Village Board meeting of December 3rd, 2018. We'll open with a sound pair of meditations. Please join in flag, please.
I'd like to welcome the Village to the United States of America and to a Republic which stands on my nation, on your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Lowry.
Here.
Mr. Curtis.
Here.
Mr. Carroll.
Here.
Mr. Martinez.
Here. We have a number of public hearings that some of you are here for. And we'll go through each one and we'll open up the hearing. If there's no one to speak or if I will close the hearing, go on. We're not taking any votes on the hearing at this time. We'll take our action at the beginning. So first, the truth of taxation for 2018 property tax levy. Do you have something to say about that?
Sure. Just to recap, this is our tax levy for general purposes as well as for the library. The proposed tax levy is 2.6% more than last year's extensions. As previously discussed with the Village Board, this levy is actually less than what is allowed by PTEL statutes. So in essence, based on estimates from the county, we are levying about $55,000 less than we are entitled to. So if at this time, if there's anyone who'd like to address the general tax levy for the Village and Library, now be the time.
Comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? All right, moving on to our item two, the hearing on property tax levy increase greater than five percent for the Waterford Oaks Special Service Area Number Four. I'm opening the hearing at this time. Does anyone like to speak to the Oak Hill Special Service? Excuse me. Waterford Oaks Special Service, five percent. Closing the hearing, we're moving on to item three, a hearing on property tax levy increase more than five percent, greater than five percent for the Oak Hill Special Service Area Number Seven. Is there anyone who can speak towards that? If you do, please come up and state your name and address.
I'm Bethany Eggers, and I'm at 141 Greenview Court. And I just got noticed, so I'm not sure about this, but they were talking about increasing or putting an SSA on us to force some issues on Oak Hill. There's like a homeowner that says his property is eroding. And I'm not sure I'm against it because he lives by a retention pond, and that's what happens with water. It erodes in time. And that's one of the reasons I didn't buy a piece of property against the lake down there. And I just feel to give SSA or charge us more for that is detrimental to our property and also as a homeowner, it's tight enough.
I understand what you're saying. I'm glad you're here. Obviously, there's an explanation for everything. And we have our village administrators here, and you more than happy to explain the situation to Oak Hill Special Service Area Number Seven.
Thank you. Oak Hill has a special service area as does many of the subdivisions in town. That special service area covers wetland maintenance, time maintenance, whatnot. We were made, brought to our attention from the HOA several months ago, that there were concerns about the level of the pond and the erosion that may be occurring along the shoreline. I had myself attended a meeting with the HOA that was held at the library a couple of months ago, heard from some of the residents. Based on that, the HOA wanted to enact an SSA. Let me rephrase that. The village has an SSA that was being levied at zero dollars, meaning that there was no tax on it. There was one previous years ago, but we haven't had one in years. The HOA would like the village to levy a tax on that SSA in order to collect funds in order to conduct work on the pond. Based on our conversations with the HOA, we identified two issues that are of concern, so to speak. So one of them is that if the ponds are high, we met with them and talked to them about the channel of water that leads their pond and goes into the town center wetland area. It is our contention that it's possible that the water level of pond may only be high because it is basically blocked by vegetation and rocks. That's something that we said to the HOA that we think that they can do that work. There's currently about $2,200 remaining in the SSA that was held over from years ago. We've said that that money is available to potentially have a company come out and clear some of those rocks and see if that helps with the water situation. The HOA has asked for $10,000 to be levied in order to start building funds to do work for any significant erosion that may have occurred over time. It's the village's point that since we are in control of the SSA, that we don't want to put a tax on residents without knowing what the issues are and what the actual outcomes will be. So we've actually lowered that request. We are looking to levy $5,000 on the SSA, and that is for the purpose of hiring a company to do a pond study to determine whether or not there is any erosion, and if so, what can be done over time so the HOA can go forward and do the work. In our conversations with the HOA, it has been brought to our attention that rates haven't been raised on the HOA in 10 or 12 years or so, and that they're having trouble getting a quorum of people to come to meetings in order to be able to even raise the HOA fees, which is why they came to the village. I believe the HOA board feels that if they don't have the SSA to do the study, they will never have the opportunity to raise fees enough to their due, so to speak, to pay for such a study or any future work that may be needed. So that's what's in front of the board tonight, and it's $5,000 total, which gets divvied up over the 92 homes that are in Oak Hill. So ultimately, if everything remained flat and equal, the average homeowner in Oak Hill would see an increase of about 50 to 55 dollars for the year for the SSA.
I think you have to understand that the pond, retention pond, is not the responsibility of the village, but is the responsibility of the, in this case, the homeowners' association. And traditionally, we have not, we do not accept retention ponds when we accept a new subdivision. And this has been forever, the village has done it. So we, they're all, all the different ponds we have are the responsibility of the homeowners' associations around those ponds. So if no work has been done on that, and as you said yourself, there is some deterioration of the shorelines, et cetera, that there is work to be done on those. And that's, this is the only way that it can be done. And so that's why, that's why the SSAs are formed, basically, to help the homeowners' association if they are not able to react to what's needed, or they refuse to act what's needed. So that's our, our method of doing it. So that's sort of a snapshot explanation. Obviously, you don't remember when you bought your home, that this was all part of the arrangement when you, when you bought that. And that's the way it always turns out, it's always later on you find out, what did I really get into? So, and sorry that those kinds of things happen. Anything from the board, any other comments? Is that an explanation? I mean, I know you're not going to be pleased with, with an increase, but that explanation is...
Well, I, you know, the one thing I can add is, just because it's levied at $5,000 this year, doesn't mean that once the study's done, for instance, if the study comes back and says, there's no real issues, the pond's fine, nothing needs to be done, the levy can go back to zero, essentially. If it comes back and they recommend $100,000 worth of work, they can go to your HOA, the HOA can meet with the residents and explain, here's the work that needs to be done. Doesn't mean that the village has to have a levy every year of $5,000 or $10,000. It just means that we have a mechanism in place this year to fund a study for your HOA so that they can find out that there is an issue with the pond and if so, what the outcomes will be.
So state, is this one-time increase and then it comes down? Or... Depends on what the requirements are next year. So depends on what goes on between now and then. I had another question in the back. Would you come up and speak and say your name and address, please?
My name is Dave Smith, 51 Pine Hill Drive in Orchard. If you levy the tax, taxes are in arrears, so will the tax revenue not be generated until the year 2020?
This tax would be, this levy would be collected in calendar 2019.
Oh, it would be collected in 2019?
But the money, by the time it's collected, it won't be until...
It's summer months today.
It will go on the 2019 tax bill?
Yeah.
Which is... You would receive any revenue until 2020, that's what the tax bill should do. You're paying for taxes and arrears. So I guess my point is, will that delay the feasibility of the study? In other words, you won't have the money until 2020?
No.
Because of 2019 tax bill?
I think the village has some flexibility to move forward. I think the village has some flexibility to move forward with the study if the tax is levied, and given the tax collection dates typically June 1st and September 1st of 2018.
Do you guys have any history of doing this type of repair work? When new issues come up, what it has caused?
So to begin, prior to my being here, so a few months before I got here, the work was done in the Oak Hill subdivision of this nature. At the time, the SSA had roughly $30,000, a little more than $30,000, that had been collected over years, and it was sitting there in the bank. At the time, just going off of history, the, the village, and I don't know if it was initiated by the HOA at the time, but the village thought there was an issue with the pond five years ago. They went out and they did use that SSA money to hire with the village engineer, Runby Sharp Consulting, that's our consulting engineer, Runby Sharp Engineering. They and the village's Public Works Department worked together to come up with a study. They hired a company. That company made an assessment of the pond. It's my understanding that they said that there was some erosion control that was needed. They put plantings in. Now, those plantings, for whatever reason, doesn't seem like they're, they're still there. We've heard from residents in Oak Hill that they did nothing, that they're not there anymore.
I live right across the street from them. So I know basically what they did, they prevented geese from coming into my lawn. That seems to be about the only thing they kind of wish.
And what we normally see is, when you do any type of, an HOA is in charge of any type of some ponds, typically, there would be an ongoing maintenance plan. So I think what a study would do would be to tell you, yeah, you need to plant, or if there wasn't an issue here, you need to put some rocks down, or you need to put some plantings down, but you need to maintain them over time. You can't just do it one time and let it be. So I don't know exactly what happened five years ago, but like I said, John Laskowski at Public Works Director, he was also a civil engineer. So we've gone through this together, and do you think if we're going to do this, it makes sense to do a study first to make sure that we assess it? And of course, the information would be shared with the HOA so that you're aware of it.
Will it be the same engineering company that made the previous recommendations that weren't successful?
The, when you say the engineering company...
Or consultant?
That's okay. So the village engineer, Runby Sharp, they don't necessarily, at the time, we didn't have an engineer on staff. We could do it in-house, but either way, it's not, it's not a Runby Sharp engineer that's making the recommendations. It's a landscape management company, like a wetland manager.
Different from what was recommended?
The last company I knew was NCAP. I mean, it doesn't have to be, it can be another company that's qualified to do it. And you know, the, the one thing that makes this SSA different than most SSAs is typically the village only levies SSAs when there's an inactive HOA. And this is an oddity in the sense that there is an active HOA, and the village went back and forth several times on this issue, and primarily decided to move forward because of the, the issue with the fact that the HOA said that they were having trouble raising enough.
Will the $2,200 that you have in the kitty right now be credited towards that $5,000? Will that still be held in reserves?
It will. And what we're suggesting is, we're estimating a study can be done for under $5,000.
So it can use as a whole, if you need it?
The $2,200 could also be used, like I said earlier, to maybe hire a landscape company or someone to go and help move out the rocks that are in your spillway from the pond to the wetlands. We're hoping that that might alleviate some of the concerns of the higher water table.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here from the homeowners' association? Any acting... What you heard so far, Eggers?
Yeah.
All right, I closed the hearing on the Oak Hill Special Service Area. Now, item number four, open the hearing on the Timber Oaks Special Service Area Number Eight, levy an increase of greater than five percent. Is there anyone here to speak about that? I'm closing the hearing on the Timber Oaks Special Service Area Number Eight. Item number five, open the hearing on the property tax levy increase of greater than five percent on the Pine Creek Base Three, Special Service Area Number Nine. Is there anyone here to speak on that? I'm closing the hearing on Special Service Area Number Nine. Item six, I'm opening the hearing on property tax levy increase greater than five percent for the Wood Lake Special Service Area Number One.
Number Eleven.
Number Eleven, I'm sorry. Is there anyone to speak on that? I'm closing the hearing on Special Service Area Eleven. Item number seven, a hearing on property tax levy increase greater than five percent in North Town Center Special Service Area Number Thirty-two. Is there anyone here to speak on that? I'm closing the public hearing. Item number eight, public hearing, opening regarding the establishment of the Special Service Area Number Forty-two in the village of North Row, Lincoln Valley on the Fox Development. Is there anyone here to speak? Who is that? I'm closing the hearing on Special Service Area Forty-two. Item number nine, open the hearing regarding the establishment of Special Service Area Forty-three in the village of North Row Springs at Orchard Road Residential Development. Is there anyone here to speak on this hearing? I'm closing the hearing on Special Service Area Forty-three. And item number ten, hearing regarding establishment of Special Service Area Forty-four in the village of North Row Springs at Orchard Road Commercial Development. Is there anyone here to speak on this hearing? And I hereby close the hearing on Special Service Area Number Forty-four. And the next thing on our agenda is audience comments. No one has signed up for audience comments. Is there anyone that would wish to speak at this time? Just your comments?
Yes, I had an item, we had a blinking streetlight, contacted Steve, and it was like a strobe light, it was like, I've never seen a streetlight blink like that, but the next day, it was fixed. So kudos to the staff and Steve for taking care of that item.
Thank you. You know, the significant problems with lights and our stop-and-go lights that are LEDs that don't give off the heat, and they've all contacted and collected snow, and up and down the Randall Road, there were several accidents caused because of that. So we really have to come up with something. I think there was, I read today, that there had been some LED manufacturer that did have an answer to it, but they're no longer selling that, so they have not come up with anything new and different to, to come up with. So that's going to be a significant problem in the future with, with snow, it's likely had this year, and we've had them before, but not of the significance of this one. Any other comments? Next thing on our agenda is a consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Discussion. Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
Mr. Martinez.
Yes.
The next thing on our agenda, we have 10 items that are approval ordinance for levying taxes, and I will have our finance director, Mr. Hannah, can start that off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item is approval of the Messenger Public Library Resolution for a 2% maintenance tax. This is a small portion of the library's total levy. That requires separate approval.
Second. Discussion. Quick call roll, please.
Ms. Capino?
Yes.
Ms. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Item number two. Item number two is approval of the levy of taxes for the village of North Row and Messenger Public Library for the 2018 levy year, as previously discussed.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion.
Can I get clarification on that? Now, is the, to be clear, is the method of being increased in total taxes per individual or... Basically, a rate for each year?
Basically, it's going to wind up depending on what the actual final EAV numbers come back at. But yes, pretty much the idea is to freeze the levy at $2,450,000, same as the amount last year. And then once the, everyone's, everyone's individual tax bill is going to vary, you know, based on changes in their own EAVs.
Is the million portion should be considered to be a rate for the...
Basically, yes. Yes.
Any other discussion? Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
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 Item number three.
Item number three is approval of the Waterford Oaks Special Service Area Tax Levy for the 18 levy year in the amount of $8,500.
Motion to approve.
Discussion. Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 Item number four.
Item number four is approval of the Oak Hill Special Service Area Number Seven Tax Levy in the amount of $5,000.
Second. Discussion. Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 Item number five.
Item number five is approval of an ordinance levying taxes for the Timber Oaks Special Service Area Number Eight in the amount of $4,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 Item number six.
Item six is approval ordinance levying taxes for the Pine Creek Special Service Area Number Nine in the amount of $2,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 Item number seven.
Item number seven is approval of an ordinance levying taxes for the Wood Lake Special Service Area Number Eleven in the amount of $800.
Second. Discussion. Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 Item number eight. Item eight is approval of an ordinance levying taxes for the North Row Town Center Special Service Area Number Thirty-two in the amount of $20,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Why is it such a large amount?
The cost of maintenance for that special service area, for the retention areas, has been in the range of about $15,000 to $20,000 a year. So we're actually just trying to catch up to what the current costs of maintenance are for the North Row Town Center, for the detention basins and the wetlands area.
Do they have an HOA at all that should be handling that?
No.
This was enacted a few years ago because the HOAs had no maintenance being done on them, and they receive all the water from ironically Oak Hill and other neighbors to the north of them. So this is a company to not only assess issues going on in the wetland, they actually do maintenance work throughout the year.
Item number eight. Nine.
Item number nine is approval of ordinance abating the tax.
I'm sorry, you will call for...
I think they have a roll.
Quick call roll on item eight.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 Item nine. Item nine is approval of an ordinance abating the tax for our 2014 alternate revenue bond issuance. These are the bonds that were issued to refund bonds used to construct the police station. So those bonds are paid with sales tax revenues, hence we are able to abate the property tax revenues backing up that bond issuance. The abatement amount is $624,100 for the upcoming year.
Discussion. Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 And find the bill, number 10.
Number 10 is an ordinance abating the taxes for the 2017 alternate revenue source bond issue. This is to fund the water system improvements, which are paid with water fund revenues, hence abating the general obligation of property taxes of $491,225 for the year.
Motion to approve.
Discussion. Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 And Mr. Toth, item number 11.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next three items are the ordinances establishing the various SSAs or special service areas for the various developments. The ordinances proposing, each SSA was approved by the Village Board on November 5th. The public hearings were held tonight, subject to notification, there were no objections. So item number 11 will be the first, approval of ordinance establishing Special Service Area Forty-two for the Lincoln Valley and the Fox Development.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mike, isn't that a ten-year development?
Correct.
Why aren't we doing an SSA if they're going to be self-contained?
It's their backup SSAs, in case, the responsibilities would be to the HOAs. I think they're going to have four HOAs on that limited development, a master HOA in three for the various areas, the single family, the duplex, and the town home. This is just a backup SSA.
And we have to apply for all the full board area?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 Item 12.
Thank you. Approval ordinance establishing Special Service Area Forty-three for the residential portion of the Springs Orchard Development.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 And item 13, Mr. Toth.
Thank you. Approval ordinance establishing Special Service Area Forty-four for the commercial component of the Springs Orchard Development.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 And item number 14, Mr. Basco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 14 is the contract of Melrose Pirate Technics for the July 3rd, 2019 fireworks show in the amount of $25,000, which is the same as last year. This is, we've decided to do music along with our show this year, and there is a rain date on July 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Do we end up cutting the time off of that, or...
Yeah, so what will happen now is the, the music will automatically cut one or two minutes off, and then because we kept the dollar amount at the same, it's a slightly less show count, so we'll work with them to try to keep it a minute or two less than last year so that the show is still more energetic.
Further discussion, quick call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
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 Item number 15, Mr. Laskowski.
Good evening, Mayor and Village trustees. This item is regarding the, regarding our 2019 street maintenance program. This is in agreement with Runby Sharp Engineering in the amount of $137,430 to perform, perform the design work on the streets that we have selected for 2019. That program was presented at the Services Committee on November 19th, and it outlined the next five years of areas that we're looking to perform street maintenance on. This year, the, the program is going to be administered in a similar neighborhood to last year's on the west side, adjacent to White Oak. The 15 streets that we're addressing are listed in the memo. There's two streets that aren't necessarily contiguous to the area. These are Maple and Elm off Route, off of Route 31. And we also threw in Briar Lane on the east side of town. The purpose of that was, we found that the prices that we were using from last year allowed us to possibly include an additional street that's in very poor condition right now that we could address ahead of schedule. In, in this instance, we believe that Briar Lane is probably the best candidate, and so we'd like to propose to use Runby Sharp to design these plans and get the project let in February of this year, or 2019.
Motion to approve. Second. Quick call roll, please.[1789.12]
Yes.
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 And item number sixteen, G. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this item is regarding the approval of an ordinance allowing the village to enforce truancy. Uh, it's meant to be used in cooperation with the school district. This is the same ordinance we discussed at length at the last COW meeting. There was one change per the suggestion of trustee Carroll in section A, which dealt with jurisdictional issues in kids living in North Aurora but attending schools in other towns. We, uh, it allows us to enforce it as well. Otherwise, there were no changes to it.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion. Quick call roll.
Yes.
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 All right, I have a little business committee report. Trustee comments?
I have one comment. I just want to add, uh, public works, um, the last snow, actually about a week ago today, last night, that they did a, we had a, that's rotten area. It was a difficult snow too, so it was a long, had a long duration snow, so that's off to a nice, nice work.
Thank you, I'll pass that on to the guys. What do you have, ten inches of snow? Last I saw it, seven point nine, so eight inches.
You know, it really was the worst snow we've had in, in a couple of decades, really. And the heaviness and the moisture in that snow caused more problems than I think we've ever had, even with, like, remember seventeen inch snows back then. But it caused more problems with, probably with mailboxes being knocked out, not by the plows, but by the snow, the heavy snow that was, that was...
Trees, trees and woods were running all over.
And all the heavy snow that was placed in our driveways that we had to, and it froze, it was, it was wet and it froze and it was heavy. It was one of the worst ones, and I guess we, it really affected the community more than anything I've, I've seen in all my years. So it's, and I think we, we handled it better than I...
I can tell you that in one from...
You know, people don't realize that, that our, our employees can only work twelve hours. And then, you know, then they have to, they have to go home. And I think that everybody feels that we should work in twenty-four hours a day. Well, we don't have the staff to do that. Uh, I think the idea is to hold our people off from going out on the roads until it gets to the point where twelve hours from now, we've probably done a good job on it.
Yeah, Brian Richter has a lot of experience with time in the snowstorms, and I think the time now is just about perfect.
And we, we do have our outside people, but they're working hard. They may not have the same restrictions we have with our employees of not being able to work more than twelve hours, but it was, it was a difficult, we, it's a very difficult one. And I hope that everybody understands it.
I know, I want to tell you that, like, coming from Aurora to North Aurora, you can notice the difference in the roads, and it was, it was cleaner than the other, and so...
That's not the right...
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to mention, I did address a, a comment through a resident. It was in regards to the streets not being properly trimmed and snow plowed, and I brought it up to his attention, you know, it was an extraordinary snowstorm, and, I mean, I mean, we, we try to do everything for our constituents and, uh, without spending tax dollars in excess. I was, I'm one of those guys to go out and shovel sometimes, and, you know, I, I was impressed with how our streets were handled, and, uh, I mean, the, the resident wasn't easy once I presented some of the different things that have to come into process to get those streets clean. So I, you, you do have sweets, you do have some sours out there, but, you know, we will make those sour sweets too, so, um, thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, item trustee comments mentioned.
Uh, just one quick thing, uh, going off of the snow, I don't know if John was going to touch on it, but, uh, we did have to halt our leaf pickup program temporarily. We had gotten through, uh, the west side of town made our final passes, and we were on the east side when the snowstorm hit. So with our trucks and, we, we only have six people on staff in our streets department, and we only have two leaf pickup vehicles, uh, which is funny because years ago, we had one, and we bought another one a few years ago, and we were going to use the other as a backup, and now we use them simultaneously because we just have that many more leaves than normal. Uh, more people are using our program. That being said, they've been working to keep up, and they, they fell a day or two behind because of a couple other storms, and over the weekend, we had them working nights. Eventually, they have to convert those trucks to snow plows, it takes several hours to move all the equipment off of one truck and make it a plow and put it back to a leaf machine. So we were very happy, we did get a lot of complaints from people in northeast side of town, that's where we didn't finish. We are looking at different things we can do next year. So in extraordinary circumstances, every town around us is in the same condition as us. I think we're actually doing better because we do it in-house, and some towns are beholden to a contractor, and they're trying to get their contractor out. That being said, we were able with the melt this weekend. Uh, we sent crews out this morning on the east side, and we're able to get a significant chunk that hadn't been collected yet. So we had probably about a third of the east side done. I would say, John Creek corrected, but I think we got another third today. Uh, so we really only have the very far northeast side of town and a couple neighborhoods in the Pine Creek area left. And we're going to keep at it until we get them.
You know, I was at a Kendall Kane County mayor's beginning Tuesday morning, and it's very obvious the problems were not unique to North Aurora. From, from that area down to, to Montgomery, Yorkville, and every place else, so we weren't alone.
Well, I, I mean, to address the leaf issue, I understand that the residents would be upset about that, but again, this was not only the, the type of snow, but the fact that it's so early in the season is very unusual. So, I mean, I would be careful about, like, creating a, a big project out of something that may never happen again for another ten years.
Well, spending, spending a lot of money to try to address a problem that isn't there.
We couple that with the, with the leaves coming down late, it seems.
Right.
We have no control over, over the weather or something.
Uh, Mr. Attorney? We also had two snows that stuck before that. This is like the fifth most snow we've had in November on record, or fifth or seventh. I just heard it sold, I mean, it's very unusual.
I have to bring one thing up. Um, I spoke to one of the mothers out there who was concerned with such large snow with children that take bus stops daily. What, what they were concerned about is the snow being packed in certain corners where the kids, uh, take their buses in the morning, and, uh, perhaps using them as sliding ramps or something and getting hit by cars, or, or making them safe because they can't find enough room in those corners to stand while the buses pick them up. Would that be something that can be addressed with the, with the snow plowing company or our contractors?
Anyway, I, I think we could look into that. From what I understand, at one point, there was a relation, we've had a relationship with the school district where the bus drivers would actually shift the bus stop to the next nearest driveway that was clear, at least I've heard that passed. So I think in those instances, um, maybe we work with the school district, or the school district just informs the students or the parents that, hey, instead of going to the corner where there's a potential hazard, we'd like you to be in the driveway where it's clear.
Because that's basically what they were mentioning. You know, if, if, if the kids are going to be on, let's say, X, X corner, if we can talk to our plows where our contractors are packing snow into that corner, because the kids are basically, um, set to be pick up their bus there, and they'll use the snow heels to slide in, cars hit them, or they just don't have, say, spots to stand, and they'll have to take away from the buses on the road. Figure out, bring it up.
Any other comments? Uh, the department reports? Mr. Hannah, finance? Uh, no report. Mr. Toth, community development?
Uh, no report.
Police chief Fisher?
No report, sir.
Public works, Mr. Laskowski?
I think we covered leaf pickup, so, uh, the only thing I'd add is, we, this is going to be the year we've had the most, um, most cubic yards of leaves collected, so, since 2009, this is going to be recorded.
And you didn't give it all mine, you know?
I'm all mine.
Anything else? No executive session entertained, motion to adjourn?